Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin our meeting with public participation on agenda items only. We have multiple agenda items before us today. If there is any public participation on those specifically, just a reminder, it is a three-minute cap for public participation and we are being live streamed. Any public participation on agenda items own. Seeing none, approval of minutes. We'll begin with the minutes for June 25th workshop meeting and June 2 legislative meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion from Commissioner Hartwick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. July 2th Salary Board Meeting Minutes for approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Bateman, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Executive Sessions held between meetings. Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning. On Tuesday, July 15th, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding grant funding, board appointment, process improvement, personnel matters, and public safety. Randy Jaeger, Sam Cuffner, and Brooklyn were also in attendance with us.
Any questions of Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none. We'll move on to directors and guests. We'll begin with Cassie Roschinsky. Ms. Roschinsky.
Good morning.
There is no Salary Board Packet this week, so it's just the Personnel Packet. The revisions were communicated with the board, so it's ready for your...
Do we have a motion for the Personnel Packet?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion?
Just confirming that everything in front of us is budgeted with the 2025 allowances.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Budget and Finance Director, Christopher Davis. Mr. Davis?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have no changes to the investment report sent out yesterday. There's also no changes to the Purchase Order Packet. It's ready for your...
All right, we'll accept the investment report. We have to approve the Purchase Order Packet. Is there a motion for approval of the Purchase Order Packet?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion?
Just confirming everything within the Purchase Order Report is contained in the 2025 budget. There's been no budget changes since last week.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Chief Clerk's report. Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning.
There is no Salary Board Packet this week, so it's just the Personnel Packet. The revisions were communicated with the board, so it's ready for your...
Do we have a motion for the Personnel Packet?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion?
Just confirming that everything in front of us is budgeted with the 2025 allowances.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Budget and Finance Director, Christopher Davis. Mr. Davis?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have no changes to the Investment Report sent out yesterday. There's also no changes to the Purchase Order Packet. It's ready for your...
All right, we'll accept the Investment Report. We have to approve the Purchase Order Packet. Is there a motion for approval of the Purchase Order Packet?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion?
Just confirming everything within the Purchase Order Report is contained in the 2025 budget. There's been no budget changes since last week.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Chief Clerk's report. Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have several items on the agenda today for your consideration. Five satisfaction pieces, two real estate tax refunds, three parks and recreation agreements, one IT agreement, two public safety agreements, one insurance renewal, two prison agreements, one coroner's office agreement, one tax stipulation court order, one solid waste and recycling addendum, one grant extension for the District Attorney's Office, one area agency on aging agreement, six mental health, autism, and developmental programs agreements, four human services agreements, two adoption assistance agreements, five children and youth agreements, and five drug and alcohol service agreements. I also wanted to provide an update on our live streaming of these meetings. As Pamela Parson had noted previously, Facebook is instituting a new policy of removing videos after 30 days. So although we will continue to stream these meetings live on Facebook, we are also now uploading all of our previously recorded meetings to our YouTube channel, which is at Dolphin County, and we will continue to upload the recordings to YouTube following each meeting so that they are preserved even after Facebook deletions happen of the live stream events. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Just for the solicitor, is this something that we would need to take formal action on, meaning changing what we've been doing to adding to a YouTube channel, just for formality?
I do not believe you need to take formal action.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none. Solicitor's report.
Thank you, Commissioner. All matters requiring board action have been reviewed and approved for action by the Solicitor's Office.
Any questions for Mr. Owens?
Yes, can we get an update on tech?
I spoke with our instruction manager that's overseeing this, and I was told Friday you will have your numbers to make your decision, cost estimates.
Thank you. When's the deadline for making that decision?
You would have to make a decision before the end of the month, July 31st, to close.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Owens. Any other questions of Mr. Owens? Hearing none. We'll move on to matters requiring board action. We have 44 items before us. Do I have a motion for one through 44, sorry, 44 items before us? Do I have a motion for items one through 44? Is there anything we need to pull out for separate vote?
I'll make a motion for items one through 44.
Commissioner Hartwick has made a motion for items one through 44. Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion?
Just a point of discussion on, I believe it's 39, it's an expansion into the Middletown School for Children and Youth. I know it's a great opportunity to continue to be directly within school districts in serving it in a way that helps administrative capacity. I know that this is an option that we have provided to the schools throughout Dolphin County, and we have found both in Central Dolphin, Stillton Heisman, and occasionally in the city of Harrisburg, that the effective utilization of our staff in coordination with the administration allows for much more proactive approaches related to the services. So I'm just happy to report we have included Middletown in that group of participating school districts.
Great. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Former business, we have no former business before us. Is there any new business? No new business. We'll move on to Commissioners Discussion and Actions. Commissioner Hartwick.
Just a couple of updates. As of yesterday, we have met with three of the five prison healthcare respondents for the prison healthcare who have interest in serving as a prison healthcare provider. I know it's been a great experience. I know I figured out and learned a lot about the industry in a short amount of time. The respondents, it was great to meet their capable staff, to see some of the strengths and weaknesses in the industry, and also some of the nuances that exist both between companies and leveraging buying power and their approaches to a series of questions that have been consistently asked. I'm looking forward to, you know, having the scoring group work help guide a decision that will be defendable as we discuss this moving forward. So we've got tomorrow, I believe, is the last, the last interviews, and we will be wrapping up this week. I am also wanting to report quickly just on NACO. The first thing I want to do is thank Sherrell Parker and the administration in Philadelphia who really put on one heck of a show for our nation's counties. In the past and historically, it's our 90th anniversary of NACO. I serve as one of two representatives for the state of Pennsylvania to the Board of Directors, but the, there was an attendance record that was broken for this conference. So I believe in past, the high attendance mark was at 3,500. They broke 4,000 individual attendees from our nation's 3,059 counties. So it was, put on a great show, talked about the foundation of our, and the founding of our nation, talked about Independence Hall, Rocky Philadelphia Art Museum, but more importantly, we've had some real in-depth discussions at a Board of Directors level and in our committees about the current happenings within the federal government. And I think it was really interesting, Matt Chase, who's an incredible executive director of this organization and a real player in DC, framed it in a great way for us to be able to start to manage and deal with these issues from the county level. He asked the Board of Directors, who are just like this nation, sort of divided on political ideologies, you know, half Republican, half Democrat, and he framed it as this is not necessarily a partisan issue, it's a cost shift issue. The idea of taking federal priorities that were once handled from SNAP to Medicaid to other priorities and shifting those dollars to being responsible now at the state and county level are going to force us all to make very difficult choices. Whether or not we maintain services, whether or not we have to cut services, or whether or not we raise taxes on residents to be able to support something that was supported at the federal level. I think this is by far the largest and most historic, from, from the total size of this bill, of all of the largest pieces of legislation we talked about combined from the Infrastructure Act, CARES Act, ARPA. It is more inclusive than all of those combined. And, you know, there was areas which county government is, you know, does well, but it's also a challenge. We tend to try to figure out how can we lessen the impact on our taxpayers and the people that we serve, and immediately we're talking about things like administrative error rates, and how can we avoid Pennsylvania in this role of an administrative error rate to not be push those costs as quickly as it's projected in the budget. There's a lot of work to do. I'm not going to get into all of the details. I can provide some links to those of you who want to study this a little bit further, but you can rest assured that we are continuing to be at the table rather than on the menu. We will be bringing back creative solutions, both at the state level. We've had Valar Kush, who's our Secretary of DHS, who presented to my Health Human Services Education Committee. We heard from Michael Pipe, who is a former commissioner from Center County, who now heads up emergency management in 911. He came in looking like he was suffering from no sleep because that 9/11 glitch happened the night before, and he was the one responsible for trying to manage that throughout the state of Pennsylvania. We also had Secretary Russell Redding, who addressed the Secretary and Agriculture Group, and the administration was represented throughout. So it was a really great opportunity. And lastly, in our elections, the second vice president elected was actually from Harrisburg's sister city, Detroit, Michigan, from Wayne County, Michigan. Ms. Alicia Bell was elected by about 75, 78% of the vote to be our second vice president. Lastly, yesterday I had the great opportunity to be able to present proclamations on behalf of this Board of Commissioners to both Michael Parsons and Ricky Waters, two incredibly talented athletes. I always say that out of Harrisburg, it may be challenging and difficult, but that pressure often creates diamonds. We've got some of the best and most creative artists, musicians, athletes, and last night and yesterday was an example out of, out of that pressure, Michael Parsons and Ricky Waters, both with incredible careers, inspiring young people, and I even ran into my daughter who was working Michael Parsons' camp yesterday for the Young Ladies for Basketball. So all in all, a good day in Dolphin County, and I'm grateful for the ability to represent the board and the residents of Dolphin County.
Commissioner Priest?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Hartwick. I want to, first of all, thank Commissioner Hartwick for taking the lead in Dolphin County Prison Healthcare Interview Process to gather additional information for the final decision. Also want to thank Controller Mary Bateman for the hundreds of hours that she spent over several months working on that topic as well. I don't think she gets enough credit for putting that together, which has put us in a place where we can now make a good decision moving forward, but we're still trying to put together some additional information. Commissioner Hartwick, again, thanks for spending your time interviewing those individuals and those companies. I want to take a moment. July is National Park and Recreation Month, and Park and Recreation Professionals Day is this Friday, July 18th. I mentioned before that our park system in Dolphin County has Certainly echo everything about Parks and Rec. We have one of the best park systems in any county, I think. We could put it up against anyone, and it's, it's great. So make sure to celebrate by getting out in one of our parks if it's not something you've had the pleasure of going out and doing. Getting a tour of all the parks when I became a county commissioner kind of gave me like a front row seat, something that I didn't even realize was in my own backyard, many of these spaces that we have in our county. And so definitely a treasure here in Dolphin County, the amount of green space we have. And so, yeah, get out amongst it to celebrate. I also was at NACO in Philadelphia with Commissioner Hartwick. I sit on Justice and Public Safety Steering Committee. And, you know, a lot of our conversation on our day of committee was around FEMA funding, certainly something that's a real challenge right now, being cut back. I think the cost shift that Commissioner Hartwick references is going to be a real problem in a lot of different places, but certainly places that have the challenge of natural disasters. It's going to be really problematic in how those particular counties are going to respond to natural disasters that happen and how they're going to fund cleanup efforts after, how they're going to fund responses in the midst of an ongoing natural disaster. And I think we do have to be honest about what this is looking like, and it's looking like a cost shift down to the counties, onto the states. And, and obviously, in the midst of natural disasters, when people need government to work most, it's going to be a question of whether or not there's resources there. And so I'm deeply concerned. Many people on the Justice Public Safety Committee are concerned. And I'll even say this, it was even concerning that one of the presenters was GoFundMe telling us, giving us a 30-minute presentation on how to start a GoFundMe if your county is in crisis due to a natural disaster. And, you know, I look at that, and I'm just like, this is where we are. And I just think it's important that constituents recognize that whatever cuts you might be seeing at the federal level are likely just going to be passed off to burdens that we have to carry, that we don't have the infrastructure necessarily to carry. And so we're going to have to build infrastructure while also carrying the burden of new costs. And so if, if much of this happens, it's going to be a real problem. We have a lot of resolutions that we passed that kind of hopefully are going to make our priorities known to Congress and kind of give them a sense of, of the impacts that this is going to have on counties. And, you know, petition them to reconsider some of these cuts and some of these, you know, the whittling down of many of these departments that provide critical access for counties and critical resources for counties. And so we'll see if that's received and maybe even reconsidered on some of these platforms. But ultimately, I think Commissioner Hartwick and I both share in the concern of the cost shift and what that's going to mean in the immediate, but also what that's going to mean in the long term, because it really is going to restructure a lot of the ways that county government is done in a lot of different departments. And so we're going to keep our eye on that and continue to be informed, as he says, rather be at the table and on the menu. So we're going to keep showing up to things like NACO and CCAP and being as informed as we can so that we can have a voice in all of this. Yesterday, I had the privilege of being at the jersey retirement of Micah Parsons. I've never met Micah before, but got the opportunity to shake his hand and congratulate him on having his jersey retired from the Harrisburg School District. And it was a, a great day, a great privilege to be a part of that. Certainly thank Harrisburg School District for, for honoring him in that way, retiring his jersey. I am not a Cowboys fan, but at the same time, real, recognize real. He's definitely an amazing player, and, and it was cool to be there and celebrate with him. Also want to say that the Hummels Town Criterium was a great success on Saturday. If you're unfamiliar with what that is, it's a little over a one-mile loop that goes through Hummels Town. They shut down the downtown. They also have a street fair in conjunction with it. And, and it was a great success. I got to ride in the pace car on Saturday. I came back from NACO for that event just to kind of support it. Certainly something that is bringing all kinds of access to, to the downtown there and bringing people to the region. What's amazing is how many cyclists come from out of state to ride in that, professional and even novice cyclists coming from, from all over. It's kind of a one-of-a-kind event. And so really thankful to Mayor Roding and all the people who make that possible, and certainly the staff who, who runs the Hummels Town Criterium as they came and presented to us a few weeks ago, to see the success that that is and to see the turnout from the, those in Hummels Town and those from out of state even, and the impact it has for our economy. Certainly, the economic impact is exciting to see. The only other thing I'll say is we do have a prison board meeting here at 1:30 today. So for those interested in matters related to the prison, we'll be here today in this building, in this room, at 1:30 for a prison board meeting. I am correct that it is in this room, correct? I'm just making sure before I, before I make that known. Alright, I have no correspondence before us. We will move on to public participation. Just a reminder, it is a three-minute cap for public participation, and we are being livestreamed. And I'll begin with Gene Stil.
Gene Stil, Fishery Valley, and we'll go from there. I sued you guys about Three Mile Island and the letter that was sent out by the Adoka County Public Safety requiring school districts mandatorily to do what they told them. I sued them on that and also the regard to taxpayer money being used incorrectly to support Three Mile Island by the Public Safety Department, saying that it's the best thing since sliced bread. Obviously, that case has gone on now for a few months, and we're trying to work with Jason Confer and Mr. Owens. Mr. Owens has been very responsive. Jason Confer's been sort of missing in action here and there, but I got a letter, a wellness card for him today to help his amnesia come back. I want you to sign. I learned before the meeting that we're going to talk right after the meeting. Next, I wanted to make sure that you spoke, Commissioner, Commissioner, that the, about, about natural disasters, FEMA, et cetera, man-made disasters also, okay, man-made disasters also. One of the things I want to point out is that on that card, it says U.S. Grand Canyon Guide. I've been taking people across the canyon for years, from the south rim to the north rim, just a few weeks ago, five weeks ago. The building that went, the building that went, the Grand Canyon Lodge, that was destroyed in the fire last weekend, and also the AD buildings, okay? Just had dinner in that and celebrated my brother-in-law and my sister, their anniversary there, and the entire lodge, signed the anniversary to them. It was great, in that big dining room, okay? And so it's one of the major losses for the natural, for our natural surroundings there. The Grand Canyon will survive, and the buildings will be rebuilt, but this happened because if you study what happened for the, for the fire disaster, okay, there, that fire could have been contained, alright? There was a decision made to let that burn, to take care of the underbrush there. It got out of control. My point, what does that have to do with Three Mile Island at all? This has to do with this, okay? Besides all the machinery working, things like that, the one factor, the one factor is human judgment. Human judgment was misplaced last weekend in that big fire out there, okay? Human judgment. Same thing with Three Mile Island. Human judgment has to be considered when all, when all this happens. The next thing, the next thing I wanted to say was that the, the, one thing that has to happen is that the, the funds that you are going to lose, that we are going to lose as taxpayers, as accounting, things like that. As I said this many times in different meetings, is that you're giving Constellation Energy and Microsoft a pass. They should be responsible for $100 million to this county for what they want to do, to make energy in this county, to put nuclear waste in this county, and not, and not benefit this county by the energy being here, okay? People have to be the slave here. Sure, there's jobs being created, but not enough. They should be worth $100 million for, for people cooperating, the emergency plan here, that should be worth $100 million to them. Lastly, lastly, one guy who has to be responsible that isn't mentioned in this meeting is Scott Perry. He is responsible for what happened in Washington DC with the Trump administration that's pushed. Scott Perry has to be confronted. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I just may respond to one thing that Mr. Stil just brought up, I think it's an inaccurate statement to say that we've given a pass to anybody at this stage of the game. We continue to have negotiations and converse with the folks at Constellation, but just wanted to point that out publicly. Thank you.
I have no one else on the list for public participation. Is there anyone who didn't sign up on the list and would like to provide public participation? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by Commissioner Hartwick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.